We will now begin the City of Boynton Beach City Commissioners Meeting today, Tuesday, July 17th, 2018, at 6:30 PM. Would everyone please rise for an invocation by Commissioner McCray, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let us vow to the created make of all mankind. Father, here we are once more again, calling upon you to give us guidance as well as strength that we might make the right decisions for this great city in which we live. We thank you, Lord, for everything that has been done, everything that has been said. We thank you for unity today when we did our budget selection process. In your name we pray, for Christ's sake, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen Grant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Christina Romulus.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Matt McCray.
Here.
Commissioner Joe Casella.
Here.
All present, mayor.
Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Jim?
Mayor, under legal, please add C. It's the readoption of Resolution R. 1809-5, which you adopted earlier today in the budget workshop regarding the mileage rate.
Okay, put that as item C. I'd like to move a couple items up. 9A, presentation of the city's strategic planning, strategic plan by Trina Pulliam of Trinovations. Then also the community support funds request by Vice Mayor, myself, to move that in front of consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Agenda is approved unanimously. Informational items by members of the City Commission. Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
None at this time.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. I have no disclosure, but I do want to thank staff for the 4th of July celebration, which we did celebrate at the Intracoastal Park. And I want to say, although it was lightning and the barge got hit, I just want to say I'm grateful that we all stuck together and no citizen of Boynton got hurt. And I just want to tell staff, thank you for doing a good, great job. And for our men and women of the fire department and also the police department, we thank you for keeping us safe. Although when it started lightning, my parents always taught me, "When God is busy, you sit down." So I was kind of nervous, so I stayed down. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I have nothing to disclose. Good afternoon, everyone.
All right. Commissioner Casella?
No disclosures, please.
All right. On July 6th, I attended Boynton Beach's Healthy Aquatic Marine Institute. You know, it was very interesting to see this veterinarian who is starting, who's trying to grow coral to help our coral reefs. We and the City of Boynton Beach are part of the third-largest coral reef in the world, going from the Keys all the way up, I think, to Stewart. The 10th, I attended our new police chief swearing-in ceremony, along with the quarterly awards. On the 11th, I went to the solid waste authority's recycling plant and incineration plant. It was very informative and, you know, we've asked today that the, our solid waste authority provides information to the public regarding what we need to do. This past week, I heard that Broward County is no longer recycling because they did not separate their paper from their plastic and bottles. And so I just remind everybody to please continue to recycle and do the separation of the yellow bins and the blue bins. On the 13th, I attended our new EZ Dock over at Harvey Oyer Boat Ramp Park that allows people who are handicapped the ability to get in and out of a kayak through our dock system. And I also like to give a thanks to Paddle Away Sports, who provided kayaks, paddleboards to city staff and to camps for that day. Is there any further comments from the commission? Seeing none, moving on to announcements. First, we have announced the Summer Youth Institute Internship Program held at Boynton Beach Utilities Pathways to Prosperity and Genesis Community Health, sponsored by Healthier Boynton Beach.
Good evening, commissioners. Pleased to make this announcement. The Boynton Beach Utilities has again been able to partner with the Path to Prosperity, sorry, the Healthier Boynton Beach Initiative. And we've had nine people with us this summer, learning about how we operate and having an opportunity to develop their skills for later life when they get into the workplace. I'm joined by Mr. Ricky Petty, who's the director of the program, and he's just going to give you a little bit more information.
All right, good evening, everyone. Again, stand up, come up here. Again, my name is Ricky Petty. I'm the project director for Healthier Boynton Beach. And what Healthier Boynton Beach is, it's an initiative through Palm Healthcare Foundation, and we're funded through Pathways to Prosperity. And what it is, is our goal is to improve the health outcomes for family caregivers that's right here in Boynton Beach. And we do that in multiple different ways. We have three objectives. One is to raise awareness, because many people are not aware that they're a family, that they are a family caregiver. They don't identify themselves as that. So we want to raise awareness about family caregiving. Secondly, we want to educate folks about the services and resources that's available. And thirdly, we want to promote health and wellness, because as a caregiver, they go through a lot on a day-to-day basis. And we want to make sure that they stay healthy, safe, and strong, so they can continue to take care of their loved ones. And we also have a population of youth caregivers as well that we work with, and we do a lot of different things with. And with Healthier Boynton Beach, we're very active in the community, doing multiple different things. And one of the things that we came up with, or programs that we came up with, was a program called Summer Youth Institute. And basically, what that program does is it allows young people from Boynton Beach to learn about life skills, employability skills, and community services. And they're also charged with doing a community learning project on family caregiving. And these young people had the opportunity to work in different capacities. Nine of them with the City of Boynton Beach Utilities, and the young ladies, six of them, they're working with Pathways to Prosperity, St. John Missionary Baptist Church, as well as Genesis Community Health. And they're learning different skill sets, they're learning different soft skills, so that they can be contributing members of our community, Boynton Beach, because we want them to learn about what we got going on here, right here in Boynton Beach. Because what happened is, many times, our children graduate, go to college, and they move to different places. But we want to let them know that we have opportunity right here in Boynton Beach where they could bring their talents back too. So I'm thankful to be able to provide this opportunity. Last year, we had the opportunity to do it for 10 young people. This year, we did 15. And moving forward, we would like to do more, but we would need the support of the city as well as other organizations to help us with our efforts. So I'm hoping that we would get the support needed to keep what we're doing going. So thank you again, and thanks for allowing our young people to work with you all, and you'll be seeing them around our community. So thank you.
Rick, I have a question. Out of the 10 young people that participated last year, where are they now and what are they doing? I always like follow-ups, I like testimonials.
Okay, two of them, we have, well, we have about five or six of them that's in the program currently. We have one that's going to be going to Clark Atlantic, Clark University. We have another student that's going to be going away to college as well, that's graduating. Because the program is designed for youth between the ages of 16 and 18, so it's all a, they're all high school students. So this year, we have a few that'll be graduating, and they'll be going off to college.
Next, we have announcement by Glenda Hall, Forestry and Grounds Manager, regarding the plant giveaway on Thursday, July 19th, 2018.
Good evening, mayor and commission. This Thursday, at 1:30 to 6:00 PM, we're going to be giving away plant cuttings and plant divisions from the plants that surround the city complex. As part of the town square project, we're trying to preserve some of the plants. And so in the plant giveaway, the, it'll be, it's a teamwork effort for us to give to the community the plants, and then hopefully then they'll be growing along with the city out in your yards. We're going to give away the fragrant blooms of the Hawaiian lays, the frangipangie. Those will, that'll be a cutting. We'll also be giving away the cuttings of the tourist tree, and that's called that because of its red-peeling bark, and that's the gumbo limbo, a native tree. We'll be giving cuttings of the ornamental shrub, mammy crotons, and their foliage are deep reds, golds, and oranges. We'll be giving away divisions of liriope, which is a long, thin, strap-leaf, green, evergreen plant. It grows to about 18 inches tall. And we'll also be giving away milkweed, bare-root plants, which are the necessary for the monarch butterflies to survive. And through this community engagement, we hope that we see all of our, more plants growing throughout the entire city. And thank you.
Good. All right. Glenda, just a quick question. Do we need to bring anything like pots or dirt, or you'll have everything?
They'll all be either cuttings or bare root, and we have plastic bags for people to carry them home in. The frangipangie, for instance, it needs to be cut and dry, not in soil, for about three to five days. So those were cut on Monday. So it'll be, and there'll be handouts for each type of plant as to what you should do with it, what it likes.
All right, thank you so much. All right. Next, we have a proclamation for the month of August as Muscular Dystrophy Awareness Month. Would Ms. Nadine Kirby be, come to the right podium to accept the proclamation? City of Boynton Beach proclamation. Whereas muscular dystrophy is not a single disease or disorder that affects everyone the same way, but umbrella term covering more than 52 different types of muscular and neuromuscular diseases ranging in severity. And whereas all muscular dystrophies result in progressive muscle weakness, from mild muscle weakness to complete paralysis of all voluntary muscles, including those used for breathing and/or swallowing. And whereas muscular dystrophy strikes people regardless of race, sex, age, or ethnicity, and more than 1 million individuals in the United States are affected by one of the different types of muscular disorders. And whereas research has yielded more new drugs to treat four types of muscular diseases, Duchenne spinal muscular atrophy, Myathena gravis, and Lou Gehrig's ALS. And whereas raising public awareness of these diseases will continue to facilitate the discovery of treatments and cures, as well as bring much-needed funding for support and services for those affected by muscular and neuromuscular diseases. And whereas muscular dystrophy awareness, Light It Up Green for M.D. Month, is a special opportunity to educate the public about muscular dystrophy and issues in the muscular dystrophy community. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the month of August 2018 as Muscular Dystrophy Awareness and Light It Up Green for M.D.
Thank you, Glenda.
It's a pleasure.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Yep, I'll sign it.
Oh, thank you. Hi, good evening. I had an opportunity to meet some of you, mayor, vice mayor, at the Boynton Beach Chili Cook-Off that the firefighters had done. Anyway, I want to thank you for allowing me to come and present the Light It Up Green for M.D. campaign. I've provided you all with a copy of our press release for 2018. Thank you for allowing me to speak about this wonderful event, as all of our muscular dystrophy families are the driving force behind this effort, including my own. I came here tonight to discuss the campaign for awareness of 52 muscular and neuromuscular diseases. We are literally shining a light on these disorders by illuminating city halls, state capitals, landmarks, bridges, and bridges lime green on August 8th, 2018. This campaign was started four years ago by me with little more than an idea of wanting to create a Muscular Dystrophy Awareness Month. Our goal, basically in short, is to illuminate, educate, and advocate until a cure is found. This year, I've acquired 49 states and probably about 20 cities to declare August Muscular Dystrophy Awareness Month. In addition, we are lighting, last year, we lit 62 landmarks. This year, we are triple those numbers, and we are across, we are almost in every single state in the country, including Canada, Australia, Ireland, and the UK. So we've really grown exponentially, and I just wanted to thank you all, and I appreciate you giving us the proclamation, because it means a lot. So thank you. Mayor, if you'll allow me, I wanted to ask if Colin or our water management, will we be lining up the tower? Perfect. Yes, we will be. They just said. Actually, yeah, you are. Great. I was just going to say. I have it on the list, so thank you. Great.
Next, we recognize Queen Esther McLendon on her 102nd year of life.
There, she come down. I like to come down and take a photo, and then I'll come back up and make comments, because that's my old lady. Thank you.
City of Boynton Beach citation. Whereas on June 4th, 2018, Queen Esther McLendon, a resident on 12th Avenue in Boynton Beach since 1944, celebrated 102nd birthday. She was born and raised in central Georgia, along with nine siblings. She has graduated from Lampson High School in Georgia, and later on married and had one son. Currently, she has 14 grandchildren, 54 great-grandchildren, 63 great-great-grandchildren, Ms. McLendon is a member of the St. John Missionary Baptist Church, and very proud of her previous missionary work and her devotion to the Red Circle Mentoring Group for Young Girls to Become Young Ladies in the Community. She continues to be called Grandma Queen by many of the community, who were touched by Ms. McLendon's kindness and willingness to listen and lend a helping hand. Besides her voluntary work at the church, Ms. McLendon managed, manages to keep abreast of political and community concerns and make informed decisions on which she has exercised her right to vote. She never hesitated to stress the importance of being involved in community affairs that improve the lives of all. She read, she read the newspaper daily and discussed and informed others of area issues and concerns. Ms. McLendon attributed her long life to love of God and love of people. She was employed over the years in Palm Beach and Lake Worth as a domestic worker. In her spare time, she loved to play checkers, work with the Cub Scouts, and play basketball when she was younger. Ms. McLendon has the rare ability to make everyone feel the needs are the most important when she talks with them, endearing them to her. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, hereby
Mayor, first of all, I'd like to say thank you, and I was the one that requested that Ms. McLendon come down to be honored on her 102nd birthday. The reason I wanted Ms. McLendon to come down, and I'm glad that we have young people here in this audience tonight. When I was six years old, this young lady planted a seed in my life. I watched her when she would go to work, and she would come home, and I would always ask her the question. I said, "Why do that white man have that dog sitting up in that front seat when you need to be sitting up there?" And she kept telling me, she said, "You know what? One day you'll understand." Ms. McLendon, thank you. I'll be 69. Took me that long, but guess what? I could sit up there. And God bless you. I do understand. I thank you.
Next, I invite Jonathan, is that I have it on? Next, I invite Jonathan Doring to the podium to recognize his accomplishments as the Special Olympics, USA Games in Seattle, Washington. Jonathan won the gold medal in men's high-performance singles and the bronze in men's doubles.
All right, thanks. This thing turn on?
Yep.
All right, good. And no time. Good. Okay, now, all right, everything, okay. Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor Grant, also the city commissioners, city attorney, and all of you here. Well, my name is Jonathan Doring, really. Thank you very much for inviting me back again to speak with you again. And it's a really big thank you for turning on that timer. Now, now I don't have to make it short and sweet. Well, it made me nervous the last time that happened, but don't worry. Now I have the whole speech under control. Well, I'm back from the 2018 National Games in Seattle, Washington, and I'm very happy, excited, and proud to tell you that I have won the gold. Well, yes. Now, now, I'm going to, I'll give you the gold medal, and I'll give you my medals as a surprise at the end of, at the end of my speech, okay? Okay. Well, yes, I won the gold medal in men's high performance, in men's high-performance tennis. And with my doubles partner from Miami-Dade County, Santiago Castro, we brought home the bronze medal. Well, there's a big thing I wanted to tell you. Well, despite me winning the gold medal in high-performance tennis, I have Santiago Castro, he won the gold medal in singles tennis. I have Brittany Taglerini from Seminole County, she won the gold medal in women's tennis singles. And also Ryan Smith from Manatee County, who also won the gold in men's singles tennis too. So it's a full gold medal, single sweep. Can't you believe that?
Yeah.
Well, well, I play hard, try to keep my focus, and I had a great time in Seattle, and it was a week of pure joy and tons of fun. So Special Olympics has taught me so much. I had, it has instilled in me a desire, instilled in me a desire to learn, the ability to set realistic goals, and the knowledge that if I work hard enough, I will eventually succeed. Each small success builds confidence, or even big confidence. Yes, Special Olympics has taught me a lot, in fact, more than I can ever repay. My parents, like Kathleen Doring, my mother, and my father, Mark John Doring, has recently reminded me that I have had many dreams in my life, and most of them have came true. For instance, I have graduated from San Lucius High School in Lantana in 2000. I received an academic diploma. In the year 2009, I have received an associate's degree in computer science at the Palm Beach State College, you know, the main campus in Lake Worth. And also, here's some more goals. In 2011, I got chosen to go to Athens, Greece, to attend the Special Olympic World Summer Games to play tennis. And also, I won the gold medal in men's singles tennis. Can't you believe that? I get most of you do. Well, in 2015, I went to the Special Olympic World Games in Los Angeles to officiate tennis. However, did 19 matches. Some of them are in low divisions, some of them are sort of in higher divisions. In closing, I would like to tell you the most important lesson Special Olympics has taught me. Tennis in the higher divisions is probably one of the most difficult and toughest sports in Special Olympics. No matter how hard you hit the ball, it seems that your opponent can hit the ball twice his back hard, like, yeah, it's like shooting a, shooting a tennis ball right out of a cannon. Can't you believe that?
Sure.
No matter how hard, I'm sorry, you must develop a strategy which sometimes changes in the middle of the match and implement it. Implement it. Well, you might fight through fatigue, you know, stop being lazy, like sleepwalking on the court, and it's, see it, see it through to the end, even when you want to do is sit and rest for a few minutes, like drinking water and letting your muscles relax. Well, I took up tennis because I wanted to play an individual sport, but not a team sport. I wanted to do something where I succeed or fail entirely on my own. I know, I now know I was wrong. You see, we never really reach our goals completely on our own. Sure, I was playing on the court all by myself, but I was not alone. Well, just like my, you see, my parents, my big brother Mark, all my family, my nephew Noah Doring, the coaches, like Enrique, my coach Enrique Andrade, who lives in Del Rey, my teachers, my friends were there with me. In fact, many people in the wonderful city of Boynton Beach were there in some way too. You are all part of my dream team. Like, I'd like to thank Lori Fasolo of Orlando for all of her hard work putting together the fundraiser and lunch event on June 16th, along with the victory celebration we, she just had for me last Thursday evening. Debbie and Wally Majors for the hard work they contributed, and the full support they give to individuals with disabilities. Well, I wanted to thank you all for lighting up that Boynton Beach Water Tower near Royal Bright, red, white, and blue, in my honor, just four times. Well, I don't know when tonight's going to be the last time, or I don't know exactly when it's going to be the last time you will have the water tower be light, red, white, and blue. Or maybe you should, you know, have it list red, white, and green for the holidays. So thank you very once again for inviting me back to speak with you. So before I, and in conclusion, here's my surprise. Here are my medals. Surprise!
Picture first. All right, all right. I'm so sorry.
There, mayor. That's all right. Those medals on.
It's okay.
By the way, this is the front of the medals, and also the back has the slogan for the National Games, "Rise With Us."
Absolutely.
Welcome. Well, I hope you can pass it along to the council, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Well, try to be very.
I will.
Enjoy your meeting tonight.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you very much on behalf of our family. This was truly wonderful, what the city did for our son. The theme out in the games was "Rise With Us," and it was all about inclusion. And I always felt that it's great to include people with special needs. It's more important to have them participate. And that's what the City of Boynton Beach has shown us. That's what the Boynton Beach Tennis Center has done for us. He plays every Thursday night with mainstream men. And I can't thank you enough for what you do for my son. Participation is the key. Thank you.
Mayor, excuse me, before we go into public audience, I know it might not be on the agenda, but I'd like for Chief Michael Gregory to come down front, since we have so many individuals here that work- here that's much younger than any of us in here. I'd like to let the young people here know from Pathway to Prosperity, going off to school, learn. You've probably seen his picture on TV, in the newspaper, but I want you to see him in person. This is our new chief of the Boynton Beach Police Department, Michael Gregory from Fort Lauderdale, Florida. He's working in Boynton, because I work in Fort Lauderdale, so we're just switching goals, that's all. Please say something, thank you. At least tell them good afternoon, chief.
Good afternoon. Again, Michael Gregory from Fort Lauderdale originally, and now in Boynton, very happily. I joined about two weeks ago after a very rigorous review process, the selection process here. I grew up in Fort Lauderdale from the northwest neighborhood off of Sis Trump Boulevard and 15th Avenue, if anyone's familiar with that, the green apartments. High school, I went to college at FSU and FAU, and then off to FIU for my master's degree. So I've come a long way, and I'm excited to be here in Boynton Beach.
Thank you, sir. And please do not call me, please do not call me when we went through two sessions of budget, and then we all home trying to sleep and talking like, can you meet with us, please? We will set a budget, sir, thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Seeing no more announcements, moving on to public audience. Individuals, speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations for items not on the agenda. Please state your name and address for the record before you begin.
David Katz, 67, Midwood Lane, Our Fair City. On June 28th, 2018, an article was posted on Facebook. It was an article reposted from Newsweek. The article had a picture showing a man wearing a T-shirt depicting the Texas state flag while singing the national anthem. The headline of the article read, "White People Will Be Outnumbered in Texas Within Five Years, New Census Data Indicates." In the body of the article, it continued to cite figures as well as percentages and the potential effect on future elections. What was most interesting were the five postings by individuals soon after the article was posted. There have been several more since the 28th. I will read the first five in order in which they were posted. My intent by reading the posts is for the sake of conversation and not to suggest in any way that I agree with or condone them. The first one was from an Ann Hawkins, the word "and" in question marks. The second one from a Stephen Babin, "Most Hispanics Should Vote for Democrats Since Most Republicans Are Prejudiced, So Texas Could Become a Toss-Up State Hopefully." The next one from a Dale Logan, "Not If They Manipulate the Census Figures, Which Is A Given." Next one from a Ben Bauchisman, "Yee-ha, arriba," or words substantially to that effect. And before, just to let you know, as they say in Louisiana, here's where the cayenne pepper hits the fan. The next one was from Mark Carre George, "And In Boynton, By Haitians," laugh out loud. Mark Carre George, in Boynton, "And Boynton, By Haitians," laugh out loud. Mr. Carre George is a former member of the CRA board. He's a board member for Pathway to Prosperity and an active member of the Boynton Beach Chamber of Commerce. He also serves as an ambassador to the chamber. His insulting, pejorative, and disparaging remark about and towards the Haitian community of Boynton Beach should offend any and all of us. The Haitian community in Boynton Beach is vibrant and contributes greatly to our city. Considering who are the partners with Pathway to Prosperity and the members of the Chamber of Commerce represents, it's my opinion that both organizations should reevaluate their respective relationships with Mr. Carre George. As the city of Boynton Beach and the Boynton Beach CRA are members of the Chamber of Commerce, I ask that the city commission direct the city manager, and as the CRA board, direct the CRA director to cancel the memberships unless the Boynton Beach Chamber of Commerce revokes Mr. Carre George's membership and affiliation with the chamber. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Andrew Padre, 800 North Road. And thank you once again, Commissioner, for my appointment to the Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals. I'm actually here tonight to request that the commission institute, if you will, an organizational meeting. We don't really meet that frequently. Frankly, none of the members know who each other is, and I just feel that in order to kind of come up with a consensus as to how we want to move forward with this board, perhaps this is something that you guys can facilitate, kind of like a meet and greet. We would get together and just go over some of the basics. Can you hear me now? And just basically make the board more accessible to the public in general. And so I was hoping that you guys would agree to that.
You know, basically, Jim, the Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals has its own ordinance. If I'm not mistaken, it wasn't founded by resolution?
It was created by the city commission originally, but the terms were dictated by the state statute regarding appointment.
Okay. I guess, is that something that we can do so that we know who the new chairman is?
I think you can do that. I'll look into it and double check, but I think it can be done.
Okay.
So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Herb S. 1711 Woodford, Woodbright Road, Boynton Beach. I was drafted, served my time, I didn't run to Canada. On Trump's key president, four times, he bowed out. He showed up and didn't serve on minute injuries or whatever he claims, a foreflusher. He continues to knock this gentleman, John McCain, who was a hero. He calls him a coward. Spent five and a half years. He ought to read the book. Also, wow, last, yesterday, what he did borders on treason. Borders on treason. He has said that Putin, Putin, I think they got something on Trump. They have to have something on him that he did, or whatever. He's a songbird. He's a puppet, the puppeteer. To go into a conference, one-on-one with a KGB guy, Trump's key is no match for the KGB guy. Who the hell knows what went on on there, what he gave away? Shame on the Republicans that are complicit. They are complicit. McConnell today says, well, we got it, we know that they did this. Didn't mention any name, didn't mention Trump's name. All the other guys, even the Senator Flight from Arizona, guy from Texas, all of these people talk, and they talk a good game. But where are they to take care of this guy? They should impeach. And I'll tell you something, we have an opportunity, come November, to set the record straight, to take back the House and the Senate and set things right. I tell you something, I've been saying this for the last two, close to two years, and I've been proven more than right. This guy has set us back 100 years, came up during the 30s. There's Hitler, Mussolini, and Trump. He's using their playbook. You're going to get a knock on the door one day. I hope that doesn't happen, for we are, now have a fascist president, we have a fascist senate, a fascist house, and let me tell you something, they don't speak up. They had, the Republicans have the opportunity to speak up.
Thank you, thank you.
And they don't. Read this book, McCain is a hero.
Herb, thank you, may please sit down.
Susan Oyer, 147 East 27th Way, that's just a handout in regards to the email I sent earlier today, so you don't have to print it out on your own. I wanted to talk tonight about black plastic. I saw this on July 1st in the Palm Beach Post and wasn't sure how many people saw this. Black plastic apparently does not recycle properly and is highly, highly toxic. The big concerns are that children like to put black plastic toys in their mouth, and we eat with black plastic forks and knives at fast food places, and we get our salads, et cetera, in black plastic from Publix or Walmart or wherever you go to get your food. The black plastic, because it does not recycle properly, it, I guess it emits or, you know, gives off some kind of chemicals, including bromine, lead, brominated flame retardants. So you're basically putting flame retardants in your mouth when you eat with black plastic silverware. Heavy metals, including cadium, chromium, mercury, and I've mentioned lead, it causes reproductive and thyroid problems from neurotoxicity, mental retardation, kidney, bone, and lung disease. So the moral of the story is, please stop using black plastic forks, knives, spoons, and black plastic containers for your food. Apparently, it's also in your black plastic garbage bags, but I don't think any of us put those in our mouth, so I think we're generally safe from that. But please beware black plastic, and especially if you have little kids, don't give them black plastic toys to play with. Thank you.
Good evening, Alex Stevens, on behalf of Catholic Charities and the Associate Director, 212 East Boynton, we have a pregnancy care center there. And I'm not sure this is the venue, but I just want to, we did send a letter to the mayor regarding our concerns of the district energy plant going in 80 feet from our pregnancy care center. Those issues were addressed, thank you very much, but we did just want to put it on the record here tonight that we do have concern regarding our clients and that facility being so close.
Hi, my name is Kevin Homer, I live at 2505 Lake Drive North here in Boynton Beach. A couple months ago, I stressed the importance of a strong police and code enforcement department, which we're really heading in the direction, right direction. While I know that we're unable to eliminate all of our pollution at Intercoastal Park and other areas, I'm confident that we're making headway in enhancing Boynton's residents and visitors' quality of life. About a week ago, I attended the police induction ceremony in which several of the officers were recognized for their heroism. Personally, I was blown away. But prior to the meeting, I showed up unannounced and met with Mark Woods, the head of the code enforcement department for Boynton Beach. I brought one of these signs with me. A single Boca Raton-based business placed 49 illegal signs in our well-manicured swales and medians along federal and Congress, which the Boynton Beach Public Works Department works so very hard to maintain. The visual pollution is not just ugly, but more importantly, it's a distraction for drivers, and these metal stakes, often left behind, are a nuisance to the city's expensive lawn equipment. These businesses are not contributing to our city. Following the city budget meeting last night, I saw Mark Woods again. I smiled and told him that I haven't seen any signs in the last week since we spoke. His smile trumped mine, as he explained that he and his staff recognized and immediately addressed the issue. I know it's frustrating for these code officers to remove such signage, only to find more in the same location the following day. Trust me, I feel the exact same while removing pollution in the park four days a week. But this is our city, and along with the code enforcement department, I take tremendous pride in keeping Boynton Beach clean and safe. After speaking with a contact with the city of Tampa, we believe there's an opportunity to tweak our litter code and fining system. I want to publicly thank the code enforcement department for their time in digging deeper into this issue. And to the community, if safely removing illegal signs is not your thing, come join Boynton Cares during our next cleanup, August 5th, at 9:00 AM at Intercoastal Park. Thank you.
I'm Sonny Garcia, reside at 1631 Northwestern Lane. I'm back here with the coach, they went to play in Portugal, and the kids played their heart out, so here he is.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to take the advice of Mayor Roseland for the generous donation of our club, as a great appreciation. And on behalf of Boy United FC, we'd like to present a team banner for the city of Boynton Beach, to remember our performance in Portugal. And, wow, we ended in third place in our bracket. Our kids played pretty hard, pretty well, and may proud Boynton Beach. I'm proud of my kids, and thank you for all, all your support.
He's being humble, he doesn't want to brag very much, but he forgot to mention that they ended up third out of 122 teams. So that's a very big accomplishment.
We have two alternate positions available on the Arts Commission. We have one regular and two alternate positions available on the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. And we have one regular position on the Planning and Development Board. Commissioner Katz?
Yeah, I would nominate Malcolm Groper for the position on the Planning and Development Board.
I can.
All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, appointment passes unanimously. Next, we have one appointment, one regular seat available on the Police Pension Board.
I'll nominate Sergeant Daniel Duggar for that position on the Police Pension Board.
Second?
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. And we also have one alternate position available on the Senior Advisory Board.
Mayor Grant, excuse me.
Yes.
I'd just like to mention that this is the first time I've ever seen less than this few of openings on our advisory board in all the years I've been here. Speaks remarkable for our volunteers that come and serve on these boards.
Well, hopefully, Lori, we're going to have that volunteer dinner soon?
Yeah, early September, I think.
Okay, so, I think that's why.
We're going to do it late August, then we're moving, so we're... Do we pick a new date yet, Eleanor? Not yet?
No, we have a different date.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next, before consent agenda, we have a presentation by Trina for the city's strategic plan.
Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Staff, and Guests, good evening, everyone. My name is Trina Pulliam. I am the consultant, run a small consulting firm. We only work for local governments, and I am fortunate to work for the city of Boynton Beach and helping them with the strategic plan. This is our third year, I believe, in this, so a lot of this should look familiar. In the process, all the Commissioners have seen this work, so this presentation is a This is an overview of the process. This is the process we've been using since 2016, going into 2017 for FY18, and now this will be for FY19. This is a systematic, data-driven, documented process. It is consistent, we do it each year. It involves both a strategy analysis of the year before, it involves Commissioner engagement through interviews, which we do on an annual basis, it involves initiatives and input from staff, and I thank you all for coming to those meetings and sitting at length with me through those status meetings. And then we prioritize and adopt through workshop, and then we review the formal strategic plan at this meeting. This is a document, a graphic that actually shows the components of the strategic plan. Each of these components, you will see, I'll walk through them briefly. At the top, the House is the vision and the mission, we'll walk through those. I don't believe there will be any changes to those. I don't believe there will be any changes to those. And then you have eight strategic pillars. Those eight strategic pillars show the strategic priorities for the city. Each one has a focus and a meaning. And then underneath that, there are strategic projects. There are strategic initiatives, which are the city's ambitions. There are four of those. We have named them the Big Four. So we have the eight pillars and the Big Four. And then action plans, which will be the step that occurs after the plan is accepted. There we go. Fabulous background. I think that's probably someone else's presentation, but that's okay. We're going to walk through very quickly, very quickly. So the strategic plan drives the activities for the staff to do on an annual basis, and it also drives the financial plan. We try to do the strategic plan and get it accepted prior to the acceptance of the budget so that we know what we have to budget for. Our vision is, and this has been reviewed by each of the commissioners, and I don't believe there will be any changes, our vision is to be a welcoming, progressive coastal community that celebrates culture, innovation, and business development. Do I hear any opposition, any textual changes? Hearing none. The mission statement, which you'll see when you walk into most of the places, has been pre-approved through the interviews. I don't believe there will be any changes, and it says, "The city of Boynton Beach is a vibrant and sustainable community that provides exceptional services." Any textual changes to that? Hearing none. These are the eight strategic pillars. These are the priorities. They are listed. I will not go through each one. The next eight slides walks through them. There will be a document online after the approval of the strategic plan that will give much more detail of this presentation. The commissioners have it in front of them. There may be a couple of copies in the back. I'm not sure, but it will look something like this, and it's roughly 30 pages or so. So that will be in accompaniment to this. So the first one is safe and livable neighborhoods. The second one is culturally distinct downtown. That is a big focus for the city at this time. The third one is connected and engaged community, and that is also a big focus. Balanced land management, that's always a strategic priority for most cities where we work. Strong local economy. We have lots of initiatives under this particular pillar, working very hard on that. And as always, one of the big complaints for most cities in South Florida, transportation and mobility, working on those major thoroughfares. This particular strategic pillar, there are not a ton of initiatives at this time because it would not be financially or fiscally responsible for the city to work on it until after the downtown is further along. So you won't see a ton of initiatives in this particular pillar. And all the cities where we work have a focus for financial excellence and sustainability, and finally, a high-performing organization. The city of Boynton Beach is dedicated to efficiencies, looking for efficiencies, and being very effective in the work that they do. And I have good fortune to work with the city in several departments in that area. So now you're wondering, so what have we done? Since my organization has been here, we've been tracking the initiatives that we work on. This graphic, I know, is small, but I will explain very quickly. There are 57 initiatives between fiscal year 17, which covers October 16 through September 30 of 17, and fiscal year 18, which started October of 2017 and will end at the end of September 2018. 57 initiatives. When I say initiatives, I want everyone to understand, this is above and beyond the regular work that the city already does. So if there were no strategic plan, you would still have safe and livable neighborhoods. You would still have water. You would still have garbage pickup. You would still have stormwater, trees picked up, emergency operations if and when, God forbid, we need them. This is above and beyond. This city does a ton of work, and I want to commend the commission for funding it, and I want to commend Lori for doing it at a very fiscally responsible effort. So what this graph tells you is of those 57 initiatives that were started, you have nine of them, which are 100% complete. They were started, and they're done, which means they're operationalized, they've now become a part of those regular operations. There are seven of them that are mostly done. 75% are done. More than likely, those will be finished by the end of this fiscal year, which ends in September. And finally, there are 11 that are 50% done. What that means is, out of 57, 27 are complete, mostly complete, or halfway completed. And that's a big job for the city, and so I commend you for that. Some of them are complete and not operationalized. There are four in that. Those are initiatives that are one and done. We did it. We finished it. We move on now. There are four in that category. The rest of them are either not started or partially started. So that's what this graph will show you. This graph shows the exact same information. There are 57 of them, but what we did was is we segmented them by department. So you can see by department who's working on what, and it's color-coded. In this particular document, it is on page 13 of this document, and this will be available as soon as it's approved and non-drafted. So where does that take us? That takes us to the new projects that we are working on for fiscal year 19, which will start this coming October. So this coming October, we will be working on 18 projects. By far, the biggest one would be the town square, and this year, we will start the management plan for that. And then there are 17 others. So that's what the city has projected for fiscal year 19, and that's what will be also in this document. Is there any need on the dais to discuss or clarify any of these projects?
Board?
Hearing none, we will move on. So it is now time to approve the strategic plan, and then I will explain next steps.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, may have a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. What's the next step?
And so the next steps are for the staff, and we will walk through doing action plans so that each one of those items has an action plan, and then the staff will have delegated tasks that they do to get those done. And then when we start this process all over again, I will do an analysis to see what has been completed, and we will start over for the following year, which will be fiscal year 2020. Thank you, and thank you.
Thank you. Lori, my take is, I know that this is a three-year strategic plan. It's already been, you know, out there. How much money have we spent thus far on the strategic plan?
This fiscal year?
No, no, no.
For all three years?
No, all three years. If you have to get it to me, that'd be fine.
Yeah, may I do that, sir? I'll get that to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not worried about the money, but I'm concerned about, you know, I'd like to know if we're getting our money's worth. That's all. Thank you.
Next, we have item, what is it? 12B, approve the use of $500 of Vice Mayor's Romulus Community Support Funds to assist Boynton United Florida soccer team.
A move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, approve the use of $600 of Mayor Grant's Community Support Funds to assist GBDC Entrepreneurship Institute.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on, back on to item six, Consent Agenda. Are there any items that the commission would like to pull regarding Consent Agenda? All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to bids and purchases over $100,000. Approve utilizing the National IPA Cooperative Contract with Easy Go Division of Textron for the purchase of 90 2018 TXT electric golf carts, one 2018 Cushman Holler electric utility vehicle, and seven 2018 Cushman Hollers 800X gasoline utility vehicles. May have a motion to approve, subject to discussion.
Still moved.
Second.
Ron Tapper, Golf Course Manager.
So what are the, what does the new 2008 models have that the 2014 models don't?
Our model that we have right now are two, the model we have right now is the Yamaha 2013, which we're getting $1,400 a cart trade-in value, which is fantastic. We're getting the one electric utility vehicle is a bag cart that's for the guys to pick up the bags around the, to bring to the customers. That's electric. The seven other vehicles are to replace the maintenance vehicles that are 15 to 20 years old to go around the course.
Are we still going to have the, what is that, the tablet to let me know how far away I am from the pin?
GPS is going to be, yes. Yes, the GPS is waiting for the signature. There will be three years on that. That's going to be transferred to these carts.
All right. Wonderful. That's what it does.
I guess some of us need that help.
All right. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, approve the purchase of 17 police replacement vehicles as proposed in the full year, fiscal year 1819 Fleet Division Vehicle Replacement Budget in the estimated amount of $547,949.61 from Allen J. Fleet Sales of Sebring, Florida, using the Florida Sheriff's Association Contract for police vehicles. May have a motion to approve.
A move for discussion.
Second.
All right. Mac?
Thank you. I'd like to know, the vehicles, are they all the same?
Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works and Engineering. Yes, they're 2019, 2018 SUVs. Yes.
2018 SUVs, so we're going more or less like from the cars to SUVs now?
Correct, yes.
There's a lot of cities doing that.
Yes, absolutely.
Very cool.
Andrew, these aren't a four-wheel drive, are they?
No, all-wheel drive, yes.
All-wheel drive?
Yes.
Let me ask another question, now that I hope to ever use one. Is it difficult putting a person in an SUV as it is and putting them into a police car, a regular car?
My understanding that...
I said I'd never use one, okay?
Good evening, Kelly Harris, Assistant Chief. No, they'd be much easier to put in and out of an SUV than the actual vehicles that they've been putting them in now.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Any discussion, further discussion from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to approve the purchase of an automated side loader sanitation truck from Scranton Manufacturing Co. in the amount of $259,774.45, utilizing the following contract, Sourcewell, formerly National Joint Powers Alliance.
A move with discussion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second for discussion.
Yes, Vice Mayor?
I just want to ensure that we don't have a repeat of the issue we had a few years ago when we bought a lemon.
Right.
Sometimes it happens. I mean, we do review the vehicles before they come, and they are under warranty. So if we do, they should take it back, so.
That example, when we had that situation, was it fully refunded, and we got another vehicle?
To my knowledge, yes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That was my question, you know, because we did get a lemon. Maybe this one would be a lime, okay?
All right. Commissioner Cassella?
Andrew, is this the same type of truck that we had, recently had a tip over or an accident with?
Yes.
Is that one going to be refurbished or used as a spare, or is it totaled?
That's totaled. We're actually getting the insurance proceeds to actually pay for a portion of this vehicle.
Okay, great.
The driver of that truck was okay, correct?
Yes, yes, he was.
Is he back on?
No, he hasn't gone back. He's still pending an investigation. I believe he had his review board meeting today, so I'll find out tomorrow.
Can you meet with me? You can. Will you meet with me one-on-one and let me know what happened?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. So any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, award bid number 24271018 IT for Public Works Complex Canopy Edition, and authorize the city manager to issue a purchase order to Ansco Inc., Boca Raton, Florida, as the lowest responsive, responsible bidder in the total amount of $216,557 plus 10% contingency of $21,655.70 for a total approved amount of $238,212.70. Award is contingent upon the receipt and approval insurance and performance and payment guarantee.
Motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
All right. Commissioner McCray, would you like to begin?
Thank you. My take is, what are we doing with the canopy? Will this take the mechanics out of the weather, or what's going on?
Yes. It's sorely needed. It's long overdue. The mechanics working on the solid waste trucks, the fire department trucks, because they don't fit in the bay, they have to work on them outside. So this will facilitate them being in shade and out of the elements. So this is a much-needed improvement to the facility.
Let me ask another question. What are we doing with air going in there? I'm just saying, you know, it goes around, but what are we doing? I'm just going to make sure that they're comfortable.
I'm working on, I don't know if I can say it, the name of the fan company, but it's called Big A Fans, it's called. So it's a style of fan. It's a high-volume, high-volume, very low, very low fan. So we're working on getting those put in the bay and in the outside as well, yes.
Maybe we better discuss that one one-on-one.
Yes, I'd be glad to.
Andrew, how long have our employees been in that situation?
Since that facility's been built. Mm-hmm. Commissioner Cassella? Obviously, we've added more fleet during, since it's been built, but there's a lot of work that happens outside.
Andrew, how is this canopy handled during a hurricane season? Is something that's retractable? Is it, how do we handle, is it stay up? Is it hurricane-proof?
Yeah, it's built to withstand 170 mile-an-hour winds per the Florida Building Code, so it'll stay in place, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And what is the amount of square footage it's supposed to cover?
I don't have that exact measurement. I can get that to you.
Okay.
But it's enough to cover them in all the...
It's the whole footprint of the front of the three bays that we have.
So it's, okay. All right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Approve utilizing the Sourcewell, formerly NJPA, contract with Johnson Controls Security Solutions for security systems needed at the interim police facility, interim city hall, interim library, and interim customer service building in the amount of $123,447.32. City is utilizing the Sourcewell contract in accordance with the city's procurement procedures. May have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve for discussion.
All right. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. My take is that this is a security system that has been checked out, and it's going to be good for like all four buildings?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, I have no other discussion.
Good. All right. Vice Mayor, anything? Okay. Any other discussion from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on to public hearing. The city commission will conduct these public hearings in its dual capacity as local planning agency and city commission. The first item is ordinance number 18-018. First reading, Jim?
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida approving an amendment to Part III Land Development Regulations, Chapter III, Article IV, Section 3D Zoning Matrix and Notes, Number 103, Striking Pilot Program Language Providing for Conflict Severability Inclusion in an Effective Date.
May have a motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Is there a discussion from the board? Seeing none? Open up to public comments. Seeing none? All those in favors, I'm sorry, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Katz?
Here. And yes, also.
You are here.
Yeah. Sorry. Been a long day.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Romulus?
Yes.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vote is five to zero.
All right. May I have the removal from the table of items D and E?
Second.
All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Jim, propose ordinance number 18 and 11, I'm sorry, 11 and 12.
11 and 12. Let me do them both together. I assume there'll be a presentation on both at the same time with the consent of the applicant. Yes, I see somebody nodding, okay. Ordinance 18011, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida amending ordinance 8938 by amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan for the property commonly known as Wawa and described herein, owned by Boynton Hart Institute LLC, PNC Bank, N.A., changing the land use designation from office commercial, OC, to local retail commercial, LRC, providing for conflict severability in an effective date. Ordinance 18012, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida amending ordinance 02013 to rezone a parcel land described herein and commonly referred to as Wawa from C1, office professional to C3, community commercial, providing for conflict severability in an effective date. Mayor, do you want me to announce E as well at this time?
Yes.
E will go along with this, with the consent of the applicant, which is approval, a request for approval of a gas station conditional use and major site plan modification.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, with your permission, Bonnie Miskel here on behalf of the applicant, and we have consolidated our presentation for you this evening in an effort to expedite it and for the benefit of the audience. So, the requests are as follows, to amend the future land use from office commercial to local retail commercial for the parcels, for two parcels on the northeast corner of Wilbright and Congress Avenue. The second request is to rezone the property from C1, office professional zoning district to C3, community commercial zoning district, again for the same property. We're also asking for a conditional use approval for a gas station within 200 feet of the residential zoning district, which happens to be the property to the north of the site. And lastly, a site plan approval to allow a 6,119 square foot Wawa convenience store, restaurant, and fueling facility. So this is a colored rendering of the site plan itself, and I'm going to go into the elements of it, but quickly. The 6,119 square foot restaurant and convenience store is located in the center of the plan. The yellow area to the left is a canopy approximately 7,800 square feet with 18 fueling stations, and the required parking is in front of the building on the west side, and it's also on the east side with the majority of the parking on the east side. There is also a connection, a vehicular connection between the property to the east. You can see it in the lower southeast corner of the overall site plan. We have an extensive buffer between the property and the Lake Worth Drainage Canal, which divides the residential property from the non-residential property. This is, we, and actually thanks to Colin, who provided some significant assistance in facilitating discussions with the Lake Worth Drainage District as well as Palm Beach County. The Palm Beach County Traffic Department attempted to impose what was an onerous requirement to extend the decal lane on the west side of the property and move an existing driveway open, opening further north. Palm Beach County Traffic believed that that would facilitate the intersection movements and was one of the traffic requirements. The problem with that was that there was not enough frontage to do so with Colin's assistance and coordination. We were able to get the parties to agree on our ability to culvert a portion of the canal in order to do as Palm Beach County requested. So we thank you for that, Colin, because prior to his involvement, we had hit the wall, essentially. Here are some of our elevations for the, for the store. This is a Florida prototype that Wawa uses, although it is a national company with stores all over the northeast, mid-Atlantic, and portions of Florida. The upper left-hand corner is the elevation that is actually fronting on Wilbright. The one to the east of that is the Congress, the, I'm sorry, the one to the right of that is the Congress. The one in the middle is the east elevation, and the one on the lower end is the north elevation, which would be fronting the canal, the Lake Worth Drainage Canal. This is a new canopy that Wawa currently uses, and again, we have 18 fueling positions under this canopy. It's actually a very expensive canopy, something greater than any of the other gas providers are using today. Here are just some pictures of other Wawa facilities in South Florida and some of the interior store kiosks and food locations. And again, this is the store design, and you can see the front view of a Wawa on the lower corner. Okay, let's see if this wants to move forward. The one thing that Wawa does very differently than any other gas station that has food within the store is they believe in providing fresh food. There is a restaurant area where you can walk up to a screen and order your food the way that you like it. If you want to hold the mayo, they'll hold the mayo. But they also provide prepared foods, but again, they're fresh foods. They're not what you have seen over the years with the hot dogs that are on the little machine rolling around for about seven months. This is fresh, and it's dated, by the way. So we, your staff is recommending approval on all of our requests, on the comp plan amendment, on the rezoning, on the conditional use and site plan approval. We have met with the Leisureville community on the north side of the site on three different occasions. I'm disappointed they're not here. This evening, they were here the last time. As I mentioned to you, they showed up in red shirts. I was nervous for about a second until they started cheering on my client and the application. They're very, very enthusiastic about that, and we're very excited to serve that community. In addition to being incredibly strong on their customer service, the Wawa feels it's very important for their stores and their, and their employees to also be, be part of the community and to give back. These are some of the national partners in the different states that Wawa happens to occupy today and, and the millions of dollars that they've created over the years to those different charities. They've also been named as a positive workplace and one of the best places to work in several different publications. They're shown here, and they will continue to do so. Again, just to tell you a really quick story, and I don't think it will be Commissioner Katz's story, but, and on just about every occasion that I present to the community, people that don't know anything about Wawa ask me, well, what is the big deal about Wawa? And unless you've ever been there and, and been served by their, their employees, it's hard to explain. But I happened to travel this morning. I looked at my gas gauge and it was below E, and I went two miles out of my way so that I could go to the Wawa gas facility. I finally made it to the intersection. I passed four other gas stations. When I got there, it was an intersection with three different gas stations. The only one that was busy was Wawa. The other two had no one waiting at the gas pumps. I actually chose to queue up behind two other cars in order for me to get gas. I took it upon me when I finally did get to the gas pumps to talk to the man across the island from me and asked him, since I knew I'd be here this evening. I asked him why he was there, because I knew why I was there, and he said, "Fresh food, great service, great coffee. I'm here every day to pick up my lunch before I go to work." That's just who they're about. They, they give such great customer service, their prices are competitive. And by the way, the gas was only five cents cheaper at the Wawa than the other two stores across the intersection, yet everyone, including me, queued up to go get gas at Wawa. So we really do believe they'll be a great addition to the city of Boynton Beach. They're very excited to be here, and we would appreciate your support. I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have. I am joined by our team, including a representative from Wawa, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Casello?
Bonnie, that, that's great, that, but are they like the Walmart of gas stations? Do they put the mom and pop operation, corner operations out of business because they're so successful?
That has not been the case in most of the locations they've gone to, but what it has done is it's forced them to improve their game, to knock down their existing facility and update it with a better store and a cleaner store to be competitive. Some of them are going out of business because they just didn't invest money over the years, but for the most part, it forces the other users to step up their game.
Okay, and I got to ask, why is the Wawa canopy the most expensive and high-tech of all other canopies of gas stations?
Again, they're willing to invest in their stores.
Is it made of a special material or?
I believe that it is, and it is expensive material, but I'm probably not the person to talk to you about it. I'm going to ask Mark Hamilton, who is the Wawa rep for this area, to come and explain why they are, why they spend the money that they do on their store. And by the way, on other parts of the store, you'll see materials that you would not see on other.
I'm just interested in what makes this canopy special. That's, that's what I'm asking.
All right, good evening, Mark Hamilton, Wawa. I'll need to be sworn in. I wasn't sworn in. Okay.
Not unless you did something.
I'll need that SUV then. Mainly it's the design of the canopy and the materials. It's, if you ever see it, it's, there's a lot of steel involved in that canopy. When the company decided they wanted to get in the gas business, you know, it was, you know, you could just do a standard, you know, what everyone does, or you could do something that's a little different. You could see because of the angled roof, because, okay, if you go in it, there's a lot of, it's a lot of steel, but we also use a lot of brick around the, the base of the columns. The roofing material is, you know, it's not just a standard roof, so we put a lot of thought into the design, and, you know, we wanted something to say, you know, we're just not a regular service station.
Well, on behalf of how my colleague has his experience with Wawa and his Phillies are now in first place, I'm going to be in favor of this, and this burly-looking man here with the "I love Wawa" shirt on, give me an evil eye. I'm going to be in favor of this project.
I'm sorry, I missed you before. I shouldn't have with your shirt.
Yeah, I was like, you missed him. He was right there.
It's age. I didn't have my glasses on.
Just wanted to give my own Wawa story, since, you know, Commissioner had his opportunity to share his information. I was curious about what all the hype was about. I had never been to a Wawa before, so I decided to visit one. I went to the one on Lake Worth Road there in Lantana. Took my whole family. We made it like a family trip, and it was pretty fun. You know, I got to order the thing on the screen, and it was interesting, very nice service, as you said, and I was already in favor of Wawa coming here, and I think that experience even more so heightened that feeling. So excited to have them be a part of our community.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. Bonnie, you already touched on it, because I wanted to know, Vice Mayor, you did, because I wonder where was the closest Wawa? You said Lake Worth Road, Lantana. Thank you for helping Bonnie out. The one I really have a question was, and you also answered that, was I was going to ask the question, did you get any complaints this time from citizens that was around? And you said, no, you did not get any complaints, so you took care of my two questions, and I'm in favor of Wawa, sir, you know, that you got a heart on.
One of the questions that I have is regarding the, I guess, the tanks. Just want to make sure, because it is right next to a canal, that what exactly, I know that the, is it done by state law or federal law regarding installation of the gasoline tanks?
While there are, I'm going to let Mark talk about that, too, if he would know better than you.
Yeah, so in terms of the tanks, there are state and federal laws that govern it. What we do often exceed what is required. So our tanks are, you know, well, everyone's doing fiberglass, but they're double-walled. We have in-between the space in the wall, it's pressurized and monitored, so we're always constantly, we will know if there is any type of leak, anything that happens, and then the system shuts down. We have, it's monitored in the store and it's monitored at a central control center at our corporate headquarters. So we've done a lot to, you know, when the company got into the fuel business, it's a family business still. It's still owned by the family. You know, they, you know, are very protective of their name, so they said, we're going to do this, we want to do this right, because we don't want any damage on our, on our name and our brand. So you will see, a lot of what we do is well above and beyond what is required by, you know, any, any federal or state law.
All right. Thank you very much. That was very informative.
The one other thing that I wanted to mention that I didn't, this facility is generator-ready. What that means is the hookup is there. My client has a contract with a company that has committed, and I think it's within 12 hours of the end of an event, they will roll up the generators so that that gas is available for anyone needing it, including emergency vehicles.
Any further discussion from the board? Saying none? Open up to public comment?
I would like to congratulate Bonnie. Any, I've never, in all the years that I know Bonnie, I have never yet contradicted anything she's done and brought to Boynton Beach. This year, do they serve Wawa? Okay, I just, no, I mean, it's, I live right down the block from, from, you know, right down on Southwest 26th and Wilbright. It's about time. It's going to wake up that whole area. I'm really proud of what you're doing. It's a wake-up call for the people across the street, too, including the gas station down close to the highway. Good work.
All right, and this will be for ordinance number 18-011. It has been read, I believe, and so now we'll take a roll call.
McCray?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Vote is five to zero.
Next is ordinance number 18-012. May I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
And Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
The vote is five to zero.
All right. Item E, approve Wawa gas station, conditional use and major site plan.
Second.
All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Yeah, they all did. Because, I apologize, I skipped over items B and C. I was just so excited for Wawa. We're moving on to approve Boynton Beach Fire Station Number One to allow construction of a two-story, 9,700-square-foot fire station and 56, 5,630-square-foot district energy plant with associated site improvements on a 0.65-acre parcel located on the northeast corner of Northeast First Street and Northeast First Avenue in an R3 multifamily zoning district. Applicant is the city of Boynton Beach. May I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Go ahead.
Second, with discussion?
Yes, do we have a presentation?
Yes, if you'd like to see one.
Yes, please.
Good afternoon. Amanda Basile with the Planning Department. If it's okay with you, I'll go over both the new site plan and the community's on appeal appeal together since it's part of the architecture. The site is located directly east of the future Town Square project. It's on the corner of Northeast First Avenue and Northeast First Street. It's just over half an acre. It is city-owned and undeveloped right now, and it is within the TOD. The site plan is made up of three prominent segments. The first one is the three bays, which is essentially used for vehicle storage and emergency vehicles. The second is the 9,700-square-foot fire station, which has two levels to it, and the third is about 5,600 square feet for the district energy plant. The site does have an urban plaza at the front of it, and it has connecting sidewalks that go north to Boynton Beach Boulevard. So, for the community design appeal, those red squares represent the equipment that is being mounted onto the roof. Typically, we don't allow anything to be viewed within 600 feet, so they are requesting an appeal for that, or we are requesting an appeal for that. What we did in order to justify this is we took line-of-sight drawings from across the street, and this shows that they are actually not visible from across the right-of-way, and they're only visible in limited areas within the 600-foot radius. This is what the building will essentially look like. The color scheme is still to be determined and will be coming back to us, and that is the front of the building.
Back to that, whatever that one looked like, the next one, that one. What is that on the top up there?
That's just an eyebrow awning, I believe. It's a roof structure. It's from the angle you're looking like up at it. And then this is the front of the building from the other corner. Staff is recommending approval of it with conditions of approval from staff and from the Planning and Development Board. I am here with our agent, Mike Rickards, and other staff if you guys have any questions on the project.
This design that you have up there, weird design, it's not, it's gonna be right in the center of our downtown here. This doesn't motivate me at all. I spent half my life in fire stations. It looks like a tire store.
What is exactly? You know, architects design buildings. I'm not an architect. It's a very similar design to the police station design. It's the same architect. We haven't picked the colors yet. Part of the problem is, is the colors need to be picked and put on the building. We're gonna bring, this is a little bit different because it is a city project. We're gonna be bringing some of these things back to you for more decisions as we move through the design. We have to follow our permitting process, and we follow a design process to get your approval to build these things. If there's any ideas y'all have, we'll certainly listen to them, and we'll take them, and we'll build them in. You know, we've designed it with some front porches, with some artwork in the windows. We've tried to add some things, but it is a fire station. It has big garage doors, it has fire trucks that come in and out. So, it is an industrial-type building, and we're trying to make it as nice as we can, and my problem is art, and that kind of architectural look is really in the eye of the beholder, so we're listening to y'all. You tell us what you wanna see, and we design it. That's what we do. So, there's not a lot of changes we can do to a square building. It's a square building, and it needs to be a square building, so I'm not sure what else, you know, what other architectural features can be added, but I think colors will make a big difference. So, and landscaping, too. One of the things the renderings don't show is landscaping, so that makes a huge difference on a building when you add that, the trees around it and all that, which we will be doing. I don't, that doesn't answer your question, but I don't really have an answer. That's the best I can do.
I'm not gonna press you.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. Let me try to help you all out. Okay, first of all, will it be compatible with the new City Hall? But they look similar.
It's similar construction, yes. It meets that Mediterranean, contemporary Mediterranean style for an industrial, commercial building. Is it gonna be as nice, as pretty as the City Hall? I hope not, because we want City Hall to stand out. So, I don't know if we wanna make it as.
I'm not worried about that, but back to being serious about this project. I'm just saying, you know, I'm like with Commissioner Casello, I don't want us to have a nice building on the end, then we run down and say, well, what the hell happened to the fire station? You know, I'm serious at this.
Right, no.
And, you know, probably if y'all would've had a better picture to put up there with some color or something, whether it was the right color, the wrong color, or something to catch our eye, like, that was like plain Jane standing up there. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we need to bring some more renderings back to you. There are some others that actually make it look, that looks better from different angles. Those are some tough angles. I wish I had a great answer for you, and I usually do, but I don't have one.
I think all of us sitting up, I wish you had them, too, sir.
What is the hurricane rating for this building?
Same as the rest, category four, you know, the Miami-Dade Building Code requirements.
So, this is an ongoing thing. This is the preliminary?
Yeah, this is the preliminary. We have to go through site plan first. That's the first step, and then we get into final design.
Okay. Good enough.
Anything else from the commission? Anything from the audience? Saying none, may I have a motion to approve?
I move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Approved, Boynton Beach Fire Station Number One, Community Design Appeal from Chapter Four, Article Three, Section Three, Point I, one, screening of rooftop equipment visible from within 600 feet to allow rooftop cooling towers as designed for a district energy plant. May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Question?
All right. I think Vice Mayor went first. Yeah, I got it first.
I just want some clarification off of something that I believe someone came during public audience and mentioned earlier. Is there any thought on that by the staff?
Yeah, we received an email from the Catholic. They own the building that's directly to the north, and their concern was, because typically when you look at chillers and chiller plants, they're outside, and they have a lot of spray and things, so that's typically how we're doing it. We're doing, once I, we explained to him, we're doing it inside, and we sent him the plans and all that, because we're doing all the equipment inside, the chillers on the roof covered, you know, covered by a parapet except for the top little piece. We're also using enclosed cooling towers. Enclosed cooling towers keeps the water inside the tower, so there's no overspray. So, we talked about it, we had a very good conversation, and they were satisfied with the design. They just wanted to make sure that we were aware that they're concerned about overspray onto their property, and we are, too. We don't, that can't. It's not gonna happen, because between their property and the cooling tower, there's also the fire trucks, and we don't want overspray on the fire trucks. So, it's as important to us it is to them. So, we're addressing that to make sure there's no overspray out of the cooling towers.
All right, Commissioner Casello?
Am I reading this right, Colin, that the, it's gonna be, the equipment extends six feet above the parapet?
The top of the equipment will be six feet above the parapet. Remember, there's a cooling, that we were designing horizontal cooling towers, so there's space underneath the tower where the water comes through it. Way of cooling towers, the water goes through the tower, and the air goes up through it, and it cools the water, then the water's brought back into the building to pick up the heat and bring it back to the tower. So, there's a gap underneath, and then on top, there's a gap where that water comes in. It looks like part of the building. It will look like part of the building when it's done, but since it is equipment, our code requires you not be able to see it, and there are, there is very limited locations that you might be able to see it.
And that's my, because there's been many, a project come before us here, and we've refused them for every reasons, causing developer cost to hide rooftop equipment. So, here we are, the city, coming before this commission, asking for a variance. So, just let's keep that in mind when we go down the road.
That's right.
Thank you.
All right.
Right, but I just wanna comment on that. We are within our height limits, being that we're along Boynton Beach Boulevard in this area, correct?
Absolutely. We're not exceeding any height limits.
And that's usually the issue.
Right. We're not exceeding any height limits.
So, I believe we're within our rights to do this.
I don't think that's always the issue. The issue is hiding the rooftop.
Is hiding it, and again, when you look at it from across the street or any of the streets around, you can't see the equipment. It's, when you go 600 feet out, if you're, there's like, I think, one location, if you're 600 feet out and you kink your head sideways and you stand on your tippy toes, you might see a corner of a piece of equipment, and our code says you can't see it at all.
And also get some antenna reception, too, right?
Right. And our code says you can't see it at all, so that's what the design variance is for.
All right, design appeal, not a variance.
I mean, appeal, sorry.
It's all right. There is a difference.
I'm not, she's the expert.
Okay. I believe we have a motion, and second, any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Mayor, excuse me, I know we already voted on this fire department, the fire department, the fire station, but the chief's sitting back there, you know, somebody should've asked you, you know, did you approve this building, the way it looked? I'm just saying, you know, we didn't approve it, but give me a nod or something, you know, because you just might've got to live with it.
Thank you.
We'll get some better renderings to you, because I agree, that one angle, looking up at it showed shadows. It didn't reflect what the building's gonna look like, so we'll get you some better rendering.
Okay. Glanjo's Fire Rescue. Yes, we looked at all the design, and I'm more concerned about the function inside the building. I'm not a designer, neither am I artistic, but.
Where the barbecue's going?
Yeah. Second floor. We have three bays, which is what I wanted. We had some safety equipment put in, and access to the bays, that's efficient, getting people out to the bays and getting the trucks out on a call in an efficient way. The design up and downstairs, we've spent a lot of time on that, back and forth with Colin, we fought a little bit. I won some, but the outside design is basically limited by funds, and we're dealing with what we have.
Okay. You made me nervous when you said limited by funds. What did you want that, you know, talking about funds?
Well, we got everything we wanted. Everything I wanted was on the inside of the building, the design, the function of the building is what I'm most interested in, and we got all that.
Okay, so forget about the funds. Thank you, that's all I need to hear from you, sir. I'm good.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
And just as confirmation, since you're up here, Chief, this police station will be able to accommodate.
That fire station, that police.
Pardon my misspeaking. This fire station will be able to accommodate the influx of growth that we expect for our population in this downtown area, correct?
That's why I fought really hard for three bays, that if we have to expand in the future, which I think we will with the population density increase, that we'll have the resources and the facilities to do it instead of rebelling the fire station, which is a lot more expensive.
New name is Chief Three Bay. He fought hard.
I look like it.
No comments.
120 pounds ago, I would be fine, but now it's three bays.
Cracking jugs all night. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
All right. Next, we have item F. May I have a motion to remove it from the table?
I move.
Second.
All right.
Ordinance 18-013, an ordinance to the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending land development regulations, Chapter One, Article Two, definitions, amending Chapter Three, Article Four, Section Three D, Table Three, Twenty-Eight, Use Matrix and Notes Forty-Four and Forty-Five, amending Chapter Three, Article Five, Section Five and Section Eight, to increase provisions for contractors' offices, offices for civic fraternal organizations, the sale of recreational boats and vehicles, diet and nutrition counseling services, cremation services, truck rental, and the sale of motor vehicles manufactured or assembled on-site, providing for conflict, severability, codification, and an effective date.
I have a motion to approve?
I move.
Second with discussion?
Yes.
Did we get everything resolved? I remember there was an issue with this ordinance.
We're very close to that, but the content of this ordinance does not really affect what I think the outcome will be at that point, and the adoption of it fulfills the city's commitment to work with the entity that you're probably referring to, and we hope that will be reciprocal in the very near future.
I wanna.
I voted aye.
Okay. So, any discussion from the audience? Saying none, may I have a roll call, please?
Hello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Before he left, you told me yes.
Does that count?
He's coming back. He'll have to announce his vote on the record for himself.
Vice Mayor Romulus?
Yes.
For oh, continues.
And pending.
And pending.
It was here. All right, moving. Verifying. Okay, moving on to item 10A. Proposed Resolution Number 18-058, authorize city manager or designated to sign a franchise agreement with FLSC doing business as Florida Textile Recycling Programs of Davie, Florida for textile recycling franchise for initial three-year term. Do I have a second?
I can't with discussion.
Yes.
I simply just wanna reiterate again that I expect full compliance from this entity and the fact that these bins will be well-managed and well-taken care of, and that they will not be a eyesore in our city. That being said, I will be in favor of this.
One of the questions that I have for the applicant is regarding the recycling programs that you plan on doing to help market this to the public moving forward.
Mark Douglas from Florida Textile Recycling Programs. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. We will initially do some mailings. We will be setting up a website that will list the various different locations that the residents of Boynton Beach can go on and put in their home or office address and find the nearest bin to their location. In some of the other municipalities, we've worked with the city and staff on if they're to place this possibly on their website, maybe in some mailings or emails that go out to the residents to talk about the program. And in the past, we've also done some newspaper ads to, you know, in the local newspapers to announce the program, and now that, offer the residents a convenient way to start to recycle their textiles.
Remember, one of the things you said, you had like mobile units, so I know that we, in this current budget season, have a special events, and so that both the city and the CRA, you will be there at our special events to, you know, basically help us advertise and then also to collect the textile recyclables.
Absolutely. We would like to participate in any kind of events that the city has available, make the truck and personnel available for all of those.
All right, thank you so much. All right, any discussion from the board? Saying none, any discussion from the audience? Saying none, may I have a motion to approve? Do we do? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, I missed that. Let me do the discussion. Okay. Yeah, in regards to your textile, I voted against this project when it first came up because I was in favor of goodwill. You don't have to stand up, sit down. Okay, but since goodwill is not in the running now, I'm gonna vote in favor of it.
All right. Okay. Any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Judy, now, may we get a vote for ordinance number 18-013 from Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Moving on to new business. I requested the commission have a general discussion of a possibility of looking at a trolley system from the mall to the beach. As you may know, I'm on the Palm Tram Service Board and the Palm Tram Connection Service Board. I think that public transportation is something that we're definitely going to need to improve in Palm Beach County and Boynton Beach to help alleviate the density and increased population that we're having here. My goal for, is not to redo the trolley system that people have had negative comments and positive comments about, but to start with, you know, a small trolley system to work on weekends and holidays so that everyone has access to the beach. And this is kind of where I'd like to start. I spoke with the operations manager from the mall, and he said he is willing to help have a spot designated for the pickup, and, you know, I think that we need to look at what grants are available to see about starting this program out. And because this is going to our beach, I do not see it as a free ride, but I see it as more or less a $2 ride where you can pay at the mall to get to the beach and back using a credit card system like Square or Stripe. I think right now, we're just really trying to get requests for information from the surrounding trolley systems and companies so that we can have a better idea what we're looking at. I don't believe there's any money in this year's budget for the trolley, but I'd like to start planning for next year. That's kind of where I'm at. Yes, Commissioner Katz?
I think my position right now is that it might be just premature. I could see supporting it in the future, once Town Square is built and, you know, pending potential redevelopment of the mall, God willing, in the near future, to help that place out. I think that connecting the mall to Town Square to the beach, you know, west side, east side, the ocean side, would be a great amenity for everyone. I just, I worry that with the teardown of the downtown and the potential changes occurring at the mall, that it would lack the, it would lack the usage to cover the costs, even if we charge. So, it's something that I could see in the future, once we have those three established kind of city landmarks redeveloped. But at this time, I'd be remiss to do much more than, I guess, like you said, maybe look into existing trolley systems, maybe for ideas, but I couldn't see, you know, short of 24 months or farther out, kind of dedicating too much to this, just because it's, I don't think it might be effective, or the demand might not exist until those landmarks are restored, I guess.
Yes, Vice Mayor?
I would emphatically ditto Commissioner Katz's comments. I truly believe that with the influx of residents coming to our downtown, and then the, again, proposed changes that will be coming to our mall, and also the remodeling that we're doing at the beach, there are lots of changes, lots of things that are still need to be pinned down before we can move forward with the trolley system. I think it's a great idea, Mayor, and I think I would definitely be in favor of it, and be willing to allocate funds to allow for the interconnectivity of those assets in our city. In addition, the fact that we will be adding the bike share program, I think all of that, again, just adds the ability to reduce riders, drivers, and increase pedestrian capability within our city. So, I'd be willing to entertain looking at this at a future date, not right now.
All right. Commissioner McCray, then Commissioner Casella. You have his hand raised.
Thank you. I'm like my other two camaraderies up here, you know, I'm agreeing with them. My take is with the construction of downtown, you know, and Town Square, you know, we're going to have tearing down, you know, and I don't think we need to add anything else right now. I'm just saying, later on, outside, down the road, I'm in favor of it. I'm just saying, once we get everything up, these three could be a connector, and then if that works, then we could branch out. I'm just saying, those would be three major components that we could say, this is what we're branding our city with. We got the mall, we got Town Square, we got the beach, and once we get those going, then we could venture out to neighborhoods. I'm good.
Commissioner Casella?
I'd be in favor of putting RF, what do we call that, an F? Request for Information or Interest, to see if there's a private vendor that might be willing to take this on now, and to see if there's a need for it. I'd be in favor of that. I'd have no problem doing that. I don't know if the city's in position right now to get it up and running on their own. Definitely have to be done by, in my belief, by a private vendor.
Yeah, you know, my, the issue is, is that, you know, it's trying to be proactive. You know, I hate to see, you know, this upcoming season where, because we are dealing with all the construction, you know, there's not enough people from our city that are unable to attend the beach. I know that, I'll ask Wally in a little bit, you know, have we, how many times have we had the lot full, where we've not been able to accommodate all of our residents there? The aspect of it is, is that, you know, we have, you know, the point of the trolley system is so that it's a, basically a 10 to 15-minute ride from the mall to the beach. So, your total, you're looking at 30 minutes total, anywhere from 20 to 30 minutes total ride. You know, my goal is to have more access to the beach, and, you know, I'm not requesting any money from the city's budget. You know, I'm basically asking the request for information to get, to see who is interested in maybe doing the trolley for the future, and finding out those grants available. Because if we start in two, a year, or, you know, 12 to 24 months, and we wait another 12 to 24 months for those grants, we're not getting something for a long time. And so, that's, that's the only reason why I'm trying to get it, the ball moving now, rather than in 12 to 24 months. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. With that study, you know, I'd like for the city to check into it, even if we implement this. We got to think about, we're selling beach decals, that's going to make, you know, it's probably going to go down. You know, let's look at all avenues. I'm just saying, that's revenue that's coming into the city, beach decals, and if we start almost like giving free rides for $2, we're going to probably lose money like on beach decals. That's my concern as well.
All right.
Do you mean minimal to just directing staff over the next 12 months to look into the pros and cons, and the cost-benefit analysis of it?
I think it's better that if we work with a private entity to do all that work, rather than our staff, because they have a lot more of the information available than we do.
Proposing is in the following year's budget to get a consultant to look into the, what are you proposing, then?
Basically, I'm proposing for a request for information to the trolley and bus companies who would like to basically give us a proposal for next year's budget, and whether we can accept it or not. Yes, Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. We did not put any money in the budget. I'm just saying, you know, for the spend money like for a consultant, and that's my goal is, if they want to come in and say, you know, "I'd be free to look at it for you," you know, I don't see no harm done, but I'm just saying, as long as we don't have to put out any, you know, revenue, it's good with me.
We're not talking consulting. We just put a request out for information to see private entities that might be interested in running a trolley system from the mall to the beach. That's simple as that.
That is, is that sort of what I was trying to say?
Thank you.
If it doesn't cause us a penny, I'm okay with it.
Wally and Colin, is that something that we can do?
I think the, I think the discussion that you had kind of captured the bulk of what Colin and I have been discussing, and ultimately, just to reiterate the fact that what we were looking to do is find a vendor that could also apply for the grant and administer the grant. So, ultimately, the cost to the city would be nothing. So, that's, that's our hope, that to start with some type of request for information, find if there's any vendors out there that could potentially provide that service, and that service would include, you know, connecting the mall, the Oceanfront Park, perhaps some underserved areas in the city, but again, having a vendor that could apply for the grant, manage the grant, and administer it for us.
And what, while you, excuse me, but while you're doing that, make sure that it would not affect our sale of our beach decals. I'm just saying, you know, we're going to go either stay in the beach decal business or get out of it, you know?
It could. The main thing we need is staff is time, you know, that this is obviously something that's not going to be able for, we can't do this overnight. We're going to probably need six to 12 months to get something done.
And that's kind of why I'd like to start now, rather than in another 12 to 24 months. And so, would you need a consensus?
That's all we would need, yes, absolutely.
Okay, and so, Vice Mayor?
Again, my only concern is, as long as we're not allocating funds or taking away staff time, that's needed to do other things for something that perhaps we're not even going to be entertaining in the near future, I'm okay with it. So, those are my stipulations. The other thing I would ask for us to consider is that Palm Tram made a presentation here before us just a few weeks ago, discussing how they plan on making some route changes, potentially adding the Tri-Rail Station, and then some of those other preeminent transit locations. So, I believe that that could be also a possibility for, maybe we could have them, reach out to them in terms of being a source for us for this trolley system.
Yeah, no, definitely, the mall is a hub, and the Tri-Rail Station that we have is a hub. And so, those are, I guess, the two places that we would look at to help with the grants, both for county, state, and federal. And so, I'm in favor of, you know, allowing us to put out the request for information.
I'd be consensus with that.
Was that a motion, you two?
No, it's consensus.
Consensus, okay, we're good.
Yeah, consensus.
Okay, thank you.
We give you your blessing.
All right, moving on to 12A.
12A and 12B should stay on the table.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
No, sorry. Sorry, someone asked about future agenda items, and also we have 12C.
12C.
What is 12C?
It's a slight redo of the resolution you adopted earlier today to add a corrective rollback rate, which was recalculated. So, it's Resolution R. 18095, a resolution of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, adopting a proposed municipal millage rate for general operating budget proposed for fiscal year 2018-19, stating a rollback rate and setting forth the date, time, and place of the first public hearing, providing an effective date. The millage rate is 7.9000. The rollback rate is 7.4863. And the first public hearing on the budget and millage will be September 6, 2018, at 6:30 PM, at Intercoastal Park Clubhouse, 2240 North Federal Highway in Boynton Beach.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Casella, you wanted to talk about future agenda items?
I'd like to, and I've talked to the city manager and our law department there, counsel, about putting on a future agenda for discussion for this commission, to discuss on how we are approached by developers, people who have interest here in the city as far as slash lobbying. I'd like to have a discussion, how the CRA board and this commission is addressed, maybe have some guidelines talked about. So, that's going to be on a future agenda. I'd like to have that put on a future agenda.
Because currently, we are on the Palm Beach County's lobbyist ordinance. I know that Boca, I believe, has a different one. So, if you're looking about maybe creating our own, or tweaking the counties, is that what you're looking to do?
That's correct. Either create one of our own, or tweak what's already in effect.
All right. We'll put that, and staff will tell us when we can get, take care of that. Yes, Commissioner Katz?
And just a question for legal regarding the Quantum Park Overlay Dependent District. Is there any, any expectation that next month, we might see some information that would be beneficial for the commission?
Yes, I think, well, I've been told, as opposed to I think, I've been told that we should have a document delivered sometime this week, that will set the parameters for a discussion that the commission needs to have.
All right. And the last thing is, is item E on the future agenda item. It's been there for about three months. Does anybody, Lori, do you know if she's ever contacted this?
We'll revisit it with staff.
So, basically, if she hasn't contacted within the next, I guess, meeting, can we remove that from the future agenda?